Welcome, everyone. Like to to open the Ansonia Board of Alderman meeting for June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Happy Flag Day. Happy Birthday in Heaven to my mother. We, uh, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic
Well, it's just
which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trish, can we get a roll call?
I have to unmute. Alderman King? Alderman Stowe?
King is here. I saw he's on the phone. Sixty-eight-one is him.
All right. Alderman Stowe? Alderman Adamowski?
President.
Alderwoman Tar?
Yeah.
Alderman Cassetti?
Here.
Alderman Janetti?
Here.
Alderman Knott?
Here.
Alderman Yaman?
Here.
Alderman Rivers?
Here.
Alderman Mammon?
Here.
President Stewart?
Here. All right.
Alderman Blackwell? Alderman DeLibro? I have ten present, three absent, and one vacancy.
I don't think Blackwell's been to a meeting yet this year.
Ten, ten-four, is that what you said?
No, ten-three and one vacancy.
And three-one. Okay. I declare a quorum. Before we start, I'd like to make a have a motion to add late communication one that you all received to the agenda, and we'll take that up under Communications. So Cassetti, and who was the second on that?
I'll second Yaman.
Second by Yaman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, motion carries. So we'll pick that up later. Consideration of previous minutes?
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept by Cassetti.
Second.
Second.
Second by Rivers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? Our motion carries unanimously. All right, public session. We're best here to to find people. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Just a quick reminder, please leave, please keep your contributions or comments, questions to three minutes or less. And and you want to try not to engage in a a Q and A, but anyone, anyone from the public is welcome to speak tonight. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak before the Board of Aldermen? Second call, anyone from the public who wishes to speak?
You're on mute, everyone. You can, uh, who wants to speak, get off mute.
Yeah, I think they're all locked down, but raise your hand if you, um, if you have an interest in speaking.
Got a couple of hands up.
Let's try to see. Where do you see hands?
I don't.
I don't see any hands.
I don't either.
This this meeting is not set to lock on entry, so you've all been unmuting freely. So if if someone would like to speak, you have the ability. If you're muted for some reason, you certainly can unmute yourself and speak.
That's three times.
Third and final call, anyone from the public? All right, close the public session with an exciting zero speakers. Move on to the next thing, public official session, Mayor Cassetti.
Good evening, President Stewart, members of the Board of Aldermen and residents of the great city of Ansonia. We have a lot of exciting things happening in Ansonia as usual. I want you to mark your calendars for some fun and excitement. On July ninth, the Second Annual Ansonia Seymour Fireworks Event will take place. Paracon will be back at the Armory on July sixteenth and seventeenth. And our premier event, Rock the Valley, will be held on August twenty-seventh. I can't wait to see you all there. Speaking of celebrations, tonight, you will adopt the resolution that will establish a Keys to the City program that will celebrate and honor people and or entities that have contributed to our community. This was an idea by Board of President, Board of President Josh Stewart and other members to discuss with me. It is an initiative called Keys to the City, and this board will select three individuals and or entities that deserve recognition because they have donated to events and causes, helped create these events, volunteered and or contributed in a positive way to the well-being of Ansonia and its residents. I thank Josh and this board for bringing the idea forward, and I congratulate all the nominees. Job well done, Board of Aldermen. Our new ice cream place, Sweet Eats, opens up, opened up last week, and I invite you all to try the delicious ice cream on Main Street. Better yet, rent a scooter and drive it over to Sweet and Eats. But don't stop there. Visit our restaurants and retail on Main Street and everywhere in Ansonia. Take a ride down to the Riverwalk. Visit the Nature Center, enjoy the scenery, and enjoy our great city. Tomorrow, I am pleased to announce that Bella Vista Apartments will have their grand opening. I encourage you to stop by their open house and look at the beautiful new studio, one and two-bedroom apartments. They will be open from noon to seven P M. You will be amazed to see the transformation of the former city-owned building known as the Palmer Building. The apartments are very attractive, and they will draw new foot traffic into our city, which will drive retail growth. Speaking of foot traffic, I am encouraged to see the Olson Drive project moving forward. I am particularly proud of this project. I thank my staff for working so hard on this over the past two years with HUD and the Housing Authority and the developer. This project will bring thousands of people to our city and will help drive further activity in our downtown. It's a transformative time, and I thank this board for your help moving this project forward. I know that you will agree with me that this project will bring about great positive change, increase our grand list, and encourage activity and visitors into our great city. Pretty soon, you'll be riding your scooter over to the indoor and outdoor soccer matches. Can't wait to see you all on Olson Drive. Thank you, and God bless the city of Ansonia, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, next up, Corporation Council, John Marini.
Mr. President, and members of the board, I'm live on location here at the Ansonia Nature and Recreation Center for soccer practice, actually. I want to first congratulate the inaugural, uh, recommendations for the Keys to the City Initiative. Um, and certainly, uh, give them our appreciation on behalf of the mayor's office for everything they've done for the city of Ansonia. Uh, as you know, in executive session tonight, we have discussion relative to negotiations regarding Olson Drive and the possibility for a multi-sports complex. On the legal side, I can tell you that we are gearing up for what will be one of our larger contract negotiations with your police union, and you'll be getting more updates, no doubt, by next month. But I am certainly happy to report that every other contract has been wrapped up. Um, thanks to the work of this board and our department heads, and of course, um, our employees and our unions, which worked very well together for the benefit of both our workers and our city and residents. Um, finally, um, one event that we left out was this Father's Day. Um, Ms. Stewart, at the Children's Room at the Ansonia Library, has put together an I Am Your Father's Day Star Wars themed event between ten o'clock and noon this Saturday. So that'll be a great family event, uh, for everybody. Um, there are going to be, um, characters and costumes and a wonderful meet and greet style event for the kids. Uh, with that out of the way, if there's any questions, I would be happy to take them now.
Any questions from the Aldermen for Corporation Council? Hey, John, you're gonna get off easy.
I was just wondering, is, uh, Wookiee gonna be there? No.
I'm not, I'm not sure what the roster looks like. I think you'll have to stop by and check it out.
I was waiting for a bad chewy impression, but I'll just move on. Economic Development, Sheila O'Malley? Yes, no.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. President. I've just arriving, uh, back from work, so sorry about that. Yep, I am, uh, like to report that, um, Stanford demolition was the low bidder for our S H W demolition project. Probably have to include those bids on the next Board of Aldermen meeting, but, um, we will be working with Stanford demolition per approval of this board on a schedule to with, and they will be commence, uh, taking down building eleven, eleven A, B, and C. At thirty-five North Main Street, so that project is moving forward, and we anticipate an additional two point nine million dollars uh, coming in from the federal government for, um, site work and demolition to continue on S H W. The goal is to renovate and put back into reuse building twelve. So that's what's happening at S H W. Surveying is taking place on State Street at last. To finish up on the final design and await approval from, uh, D O T for movement on that project. Um, let's see, Mayor, Mayor mentioned Olson Drive. A lot of hard work and effort went into that, uh, project, and I I agree with the mayor, it's going to be transformative. Appreciate this board's support and effort towards that, towards that project. See, um, senior center, um, framing, they're doing framing right now. Uh, we will be posting pictures on that project. Folding doors, structural details, um, are being coordinated with diversity, the contractor. Electrical and plumbing inspections are scheduled for tomorrow. The water and bathroom wet walls for the sinks, um, will be, will be installed, new drain piping, et cetera, so all of the, um, the bones to the, uh, second floor are being, are being worked on as we speak. Um, I know some of you had questions on the splash pad. I apologize, don't have my notes in front of me, but I will look them up, but in any event, we have ordered the, um, the equipment. All items are in the prep area and should be shipping. Um, will be here within a few weeks. Um, they have their specialty painting and the logos have to be put on all of the, um, the playground amenities, so are waiting on that, and they will usually ship out the end, should be July delivery date and should hopefully ship out in a week or two. Um, the install, there was a two-inch water line that was installed um, in preparation for the splash pad, splash pad, and I will be going out to bid for a contractor to install everything, equipment and splash pad. I think that's it for now.
All right. Are there any questions from the Aldermen tonight for Economic Development?
I have one quick one, Josh, if I can, just to follow up on the splash pad, Sheila, does that mean, are we still on the same timeframe, uh, where it's early fall? Where we think we're gonna break ground on the splash pad?
Yeah, I think it depends on the contractor, you know, it depends on it on the schedule, how quickly they can install everything, but yes, certainly, if they can do it by the fall, we'll have, we'll have it in for next, for next season. I thought you were gonna ask me if you in Chicago should be getting new bathing suits this summer.
Not gonna ever happen again.
And the answer, of course, is yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Hey, Sheila?
Yes, sir.
The projected start time on that, if we can?
Tone it started, it sounded like Star Wars at first, but go ahead. What do you? You break, you were breaking up. Yep, good.
Beginning was on, yeah, go ahead.
When will, when can demo start on the, um, buildings eleven, ten-eleven, and I think you said thirteen?
Yeah, I I would say, you know, and it's, and it's, I should have had the bids before you tonight so that we could award to Stanford wrecking. Um, I hate to say I may may ask for a special meeting, but they can, they can start prep in within two weeks, once this board gives approval. And I don't, I don't want to do, yeah, I don't want to do that to you guys tonight because you don't have the bids in front of you. Um, but they were the low bidder, and they, Stanford wrecking did the, um, PEC school.
Okay.
So they, you know, they've worked for us before, but they, and they gave us a good price, but I'll have those bids for you.
Okay.
And then there'll be other phases and other bid, uh, will be bidding out the rest of the project, more demolition to come. So, yeah, very shortly.
Any other questions for Sheila tonight from the Aldermen?
Alderman Cassetti to Stewart?
Yep.
Yeah, could we have a special meeting to approve those?
You know, I was gonna ask, maybe John, uh, Corporation Council can answer, it is, would it be okay to approve pending your final deliberation on the bids, or I don't know if that's something you can do?
I would approve sort of taking it as, um, you know, the approval once we're all set to go rather than something conditional.
Oh, okay. So don't, okay, so I will not award the bid until this board has voted.
Yeah, I would wait until the board has voted.
And then, and to Joe's question, then, yes, if that's possible, I don't know if everybody could get back together again, but.
What is the timeframe? When do we need to, uh, to act by?
Yeah, there's no, there's no, uh, we just, we just received the bids last week, and so, um, we want to meet with the low bidder because everything seems to be in order, and we were wanting to meet with the low bidder and get a schedule from him. And we don't, we, again, we don't have to give them a letter of award, but we'd like to get a schedule and get and get moving as quickly as possible, so I don't know, you know.
So why don't you, uh, uh, do that and come back, uh, with everything, and we could, um, put it to vote?
Later on tonight, we will talk about the possible need for an additional meeting of this board within this month, and so conveniently, that may work for this purpose as well.
Okay, wasn't done intentionally. All right. Sorry, guys.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, next up, Chief Fiscal Officer Kurt Miller. I saw he was here.
Yeah, he was in his car.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I am in my car, uh, like, uh, like John, I am at an undisclosed location at soccer practice with my daughter. So, um, so I'm gonna give a a double update tonight, a quick update on finance, and then a quick review on Public Works. Uh, so I'll start on the the finance side. Uh, as you know, the fiscal twenty-one audit has been completed. Um, we sent down emails to alert all of you of that, and there are hard copies, uh, in the mayor's office for anyone who may have interest in uh, seeing those. We did a nice debrief, um, after that audit, and, you know, we kind of looked at our strengths and weaknesses of our process. Um, we're gonna be putting those into play right away. Uh, we're gonna be starting to close out for fiscal year twenty-two on, uh, next Monday, um, with the hope of getting things in line quickly for the auditors so we can have, uh, them in as soon as possible. Our goal for the audit for fiscal year, uh, twenty-two is by December. Uh, so that is, is our plan. Uh, the time and attendance, uh, project is, uh, finally in its, uh, pilot test phase. Uh, my staff for the last two weeks, uh, has been using that extensively, uh, going through, kind of working out the kinks. On Thursday afternoon, we will be meeting, uh, to go through and discuss all of those. I wanted to have a good understanding of any issues prior to rolling it out, uh, to the staff, so our hope is uh, for the first pay period in July, that we will roll it out to the rest of City Hall, uh, the staff there, and then, once they have gone through it, a cycle again, trying to determine any kinks or bugs or anything, we'll then roll it out to the nature center and the library staffs. Um, and we'll keep it there for the time being, and then we will slowly over time integrate uh, ARMS, Public Works, and the library, uh, if possible, based on the systems that they have already in place for payroll. Uh, with regards to Public Works, uh, I'd love to thank the mayor for that assignment of sending me down there temporarily, uh, to help out until a new superintendent, uh, is found. We did close the process for uh, resumes, uh, I believe we got twelve or thirteen, if I'm not mistaken. Um, we're gonna have a panel, uh, which will assist in the interview process. Uh, we're gonna be bringing in, uh, essentially, other Public Works directors, uh, ones that, uh, you know, John, Sheila, myself, the mayor are are comfortable with based on experience and skill and so on to help us with these interviews. Uh, they will then narrow that down to a a smaller group, and we'll bring them back for a second round of of interviews, but i- in the meantime, I wanted to use this time to kind of evaluate, uh, Public Works to get a good understanding of of kind of what's going on with their operation, what some of the needs are. Uh, you know, we all have different perceptions of departments, uh, how they're working, good or bad, but, um, you know, I I wanted to just really spend this time and and get a true evaluation, and I've been very pleasantly surprised uh, with what I've seen with the public work staff. Um, you know, all the departments have their challenges. Um, you know, this department notwithstanding, but I've been, I've been very impressed with the attitude of the guys, um, the ability to to get work done. Uh, obviously, there is much more work than we have guys, so it's, it's been a bit of a challenge, but one of the things that we instituted this week was a three-week lookout uh, where we start to plan the work, uh, three weeks out. Um, and that, obviously, we keep updating every day. I sit with Sean and, uh, Mike, the two foremen. Uh, we kind of go through the jobs and, uh, determine what's what based on, uh, needs that come up, phone calls that the mayor gets, concerns about the residents, and so on and so forth. So if anyone's ever interested in taking a look at that, uh, three-week lookout, I can certainly send that to you. Um, but it just helps with planning. Uh, we're trying to get more consistent with some of the things, uh, you know, potholes, tree trimming. Um, you know, things like painting crosswalks and putting up signs, things like that, so all that's been scheduled out over the next three weeks. Um, we are a little bit behind simply because we've started the fiscal year twenty-three paving program. Uh, we're able to get a jump on it a little bit earlier than we had anticipated, which is good. Uh, that does tie up three of our staff members uh, each day. That coupled with, uh, the use of vacation time, everybody's trying to obviously finish up the fiscal year and use their vacation time. Uh, certain days limit some of the staff, but again, the guys are doing a a fantastic job, and I'm, I'm actually really proud of the effort that they are they're putting in. So, um, with that, I will, uh, close my reports and ask if there are any, uh, questions or or comments.
Questions for CFO Miller from the Aldermen?
Hey, Kirk, uh, do I get, um, more than two questions?
Chicago, I'll give you three tonight because I'm talking about two different departments. It's a buy-two-get-one-free night for you, Chicago.
Well, uh, good for you. I don't have no questions for you.
Second question is, can he bank these for a future meeting?
Yes, yes.
He he can bank, uh, half of his allotment.
He has no carryover in his contract, so no.
Practically, yeah, there are no, there's no carry.
We gotta look at the contract, like always.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to, uh, Chief of Police, Wayne Williams. Welcome.
Thank you.
Chief, look, you're on, on TV.
I'm trying to find a good backdrop, so we're, uh, we're changing it up every week, every month. Um, I, uh, thank you for inviting me, and I will give you a quick personnel update, because I know we've talked about this. Um, we still have multiple openings, but I do have two officers that are in the field training program right now, and they're doing well. And we have three officers in, uh, police academies, two in the New Britain Academy and one in the Meriden Academy, and they'll both, they'll all be out towards the end of the year. Um, we still have three or four openings that we are still attempting to fill. Uh, I want to thank the officers that participated this month in the Special Olympics torch run. Uh, it went over very well. I I enjoy the route that takes it right down Main Street in the middle of the day. A lot of people came out uh, to applaud the, uh, the officers and the Special Olympians, so I thought it went really well. I also want to let you know that Officer Brendan Nelson was sworn in yesterday by the mayor as our newest sergeant, so I want to congratulate him on that accomplishment. Um, we are mourning the loss of retired officer Nathan Anderson, who passed away after battling Lou Gehrig's disease for the past several years. Um, on a side note, Officer Anderson and I went to the academy together, came up through the ranks together. Uh, he served the community for twenty-six years. We had his services on Sunday, and, uh, our condolences go out to him and his family. Uh, an update on cars, um, we took delivery of two of our new cruisers, uh, last week. They're, uh, on the road, and we are working with, uh, within our budget to, uh, come up with the purchase of another vehicle in the next, uh, budget. Axon Fleet, if you drove by the police department today, you may have seen, uh, them out working on cars in the parking lot. They are installing the in-car cameras this afternoon. They're gonna be doing this project all week, so by the end of the week, we should have that up and running. As part of that package, we were also able to, uh, last minute, add LPR functions to all the vehicle cameras. So each car will now have a camera in it that has the capability of reading and storing license plates. We are having, I saw Joe DeBaco on here, I've had some, uh, good discussions with the superintendent about security at the schools, we've had some productive meetings, and we're coming up with some tentative plans for the future. Uh, we were providing extra security at the schools since the Texas incident, but we'll be obviously discontinuing that, uh, after the last day of school tomorrow. We are also working with the city on camera, security camera upgrades in different parts of the city, including the North End. We met with a vendor last week, and we're hoping to start finalizing some plans in the near future. Myself and my staff also met with the Boys and Girls Club, and, uh, we're working on some opportunities for officers to collaborate with them over the summer. Uh, additionally, I met with the Valley Save Our Youth, and we're also working on some plans with them, so we've got a a bunch of things in the air. As far as at the police department, uh, you may have remembered that you approved a bid for the community room to be upgraded uh, for training purposes with speakers, mics, a large screen television, et cetera. All of that has been completed, the work has been completed. We are waiting, we are back ordering a large screen television that's gotta be put in there. Uh, but we were notified today that instead of it being two months from now, they're gonna deliver it next week, so we're hoping to have that project finished. Um, you may have noticed in the newspaper, there have been a couple of cases that have gotten highlighted, uh, at the end of May. Officers from this department traveled to North Carolina. We brought a suspect back in connection with the fatal shooting of Johnny Class in April. That suspect was arraigned in adult court now and is awaiting trial. We also, over the weekend, had, uh, male and female who thought it was a good idea to go shooting in the woods, uh, in the middle of the night on Beaver Street. Um, both suspects were arrested, the firearm was recovered, and we additionally recovered, uh, made arrest last week by warrant for an incident on Main Street that took place in two thousand and twenty-one where a male was firing a gun at another male, and, uh, we had recovered the gun in a search warrant, we were able to link it to a suspect, he was arrested this past, uh, week. Uh, I know we all like talking about the Police Accountability Bill. I will let you know that there has been movement on the accreditation law. It has been changed somewhat, um, where you can now use Kalia or Post Standards. There's still a lot of work to be done, uh, timetables have been set, and I'm And I'm working with the city regarding accreditation manager and also with the Dago Law Group on our policy adjustments that need to take place. I'm open to questions if you have any. And uh that's all I have for you.
Any questions for the chief from the Alderman?
Uh chief, I just have, I have one if I may. First of all, great job um with all the progress and all the things that are going on um and pushing the department forward, but. I'm beginning to hear the rumblings because uh Wakely Avenue is a drag strip. It is summer, it is, everybody's got their windows down, so I'm getting more and more um residents. Uh mentioning it to me. I mean, the speed's really gotten out of control. I mean, I sit on my porch and I can see cars going flying by at sixty-seven miles an hour. So if you could throw a cruiser over here. Um late afternoons, usually during rush hour during the week, and then it's Friday and Saturday nights generally, same sort of thing that it is mostly every summer.
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you, chief.
No, no problem.
Hey, chief, it's Tony. I had a question. The license plate technology scanning that you had referenced. What is the initial use that we're gonna use that for and I is there. Potential to use that for other means such as, you know, obviously taxes, things along those lines?
So the short version would be no for tax purposes. So these um. These cameras are gonna be accessed, and so we already have cameras on one car. Um and instead of installing a separate unit on each car, which was really going to be expensive. Uh we met with Axon and Axon has the ability to add it to the camera system that's going in um to the cruisers. As part of obviously fulfilling our obligations under the accountability bill. Those cameras will be tapping into um these the national database for stolen vehicles, wanted vehicles, et cetera. And those two databases cannot be merged. They can't, they can't be, those cameras cannot be used for. To access that database if it's for a non-law enforcement purpose such as stolen cars, wanted cars, missing persons, Amber Alerts, et cetera. Um but each car will be able to read plates and it will also store plates for a set amount of time that we set it to to do. And we can go back and research that. If we are looking for a car that immediately, you know. Something comes up and we're looking for a car that's involving something, our dispatch will have the ability to input that car. Into the database as a searching option and then the plate, the plate readers that are on the road will automatically start looking for that car and alert the officer. If that car comes across.
Okay, but it's 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 basically focused on that use. And you know, based on what you had said, there is no options to use it for other means such as, you know. Tax issues or things like that.
Yeah, corrected. That that is not what the what the system would be used for, correct?
Alright, thanks.
No problem, sir.
Any other questions for the chief?
I have one.
Yeah, who's that? Joe?
Yes. Oh, chief, at the end of Gracie Lane, it's a dead end with a cul-de-sac.
Yes.
And I believe they put in uh a request for a sign, no outlet or dead end. And it's been a while since they approved it, the uh police commissioners. Do you know when that sign's gonna be put?
I would, I would refer that. Uh Mr. Miller and I, there are signs that have been pending for about a year. Um and there's a bunch of them. Mr. Miller and I have already had some discussions about signs. I've given him the list. He has met with uh his people at Public Works. And uh we're setting up a date so that one of my staff can go out and will actually mark out every sign that needs to be put up. Um so I expect that to be sooner than later. Um but that is uh, that sign is on the list.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Anyone else?
Uh chief, uh yes, I do have a question. Um so. When are you giving or are you getting um the plate reader for like these out-of-town cars that we had uh discussed um?
If I, if I could jump in and just follow up the chief.
Who was jumping in?
That was.
Kurt, you muted yourself.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, no, I was just, I was just gonna follow up on uh the chief's comments. Uh we're gonna have the boys go out uh Thursday for the first time. Hopefully they'll meet with Lieutenant Lynch to mark off those spots. And then over the next two weeks, the plan is to get um all of the signs on that list up. Um and that uh that sign is is on that list, so.
Alright.
Okay.
Look for the uh, there's a stack of tires right, right near the house, so that's, that's the right street.
Yeah.
You were, you were, you were talking about something, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we were uh, while I was uh talking about the uh the plate readers. For like the out-of-town uh cars that are here because there's a lot of them. And uh that are not paying any uh taxes here.
So the plate readers that even the, even the plate reader that we currently have on one of our vehicles and then the new plate reading technology we have. It will be able to read the plate, but it's not going to tell us, cause it will, it will read out-of-state plates and in-state plates. But it's not going to tell us that the person resides here uh in Ansonia. Now, I I guess. One thing that could come out of it is if we had a complaint, because the the problem you have with out-of-state plates. Is they have to, you have to prove that they um are not just visiting or it's not somebody who lives somewhere else and comes here for a month out of the year. Et cetera. There is a, there's a amount of time that they have to be in uh in Connecticut.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess what what, one of the ways an officer, if we got a complaint for, let's say, a neighbor, a person on, you know, whatever, on Franklin Street. Uh has out-of-state plates, you know, and they've lived, they've lived here for the last year. Um we could use if that, if the officers, if those plates have been picked up on. The plate reader over a extended period of time. You know, we got it in January and February and March and April, May, et cetera. Um that would go to show that, yeah, that plate is not a visiting person, that's somebody who's actually living at that residence, so it would help the officer. With taking enforcement action. But as far as just telling an officer, hey, that plate's been read here before, I'm not sure that that technology, that it would be able to do that.
No, uh um like um, I think in our ordinance is ninety days. Um for a car to be at a um um residence before. Um they will get um warning or something like that. Um so with that plate reader, if it read it in January. And it's reading it again in April, then we can assume that that person is hit.
That, that is a good, that is a good assumption. I think the problem you're gonna have is that that plate is going to, I mean, the plate readers are gonna read. You know, and we're talking thousands and thousands of plates every week. If I have four, four cars on the road, they'll read, you know, hundreds of plates a day. So it's just gonna be a matter of, do we actually have someone who can sit and go through every one of those plates to see? Hey, that New York plate run.
Wouldn't it, you know, sorry, chief, wouldn't that be like something on the assessor or Kurt, wouldn't that be a project? For the assessor to kind of look at some of the analytics behind that and say, hey, you know, if we. Track this same, you know, New Jersey plate, you know, it's, it's been there for the past, you know. Eight months or something along those lines to potentially put them on a. A list of, you know, hey, what's, what's going on with this kind of person? Why is this? This plate always getting picked up in town? I don't think that's necessarily a police thing. If it's, especially if if Chicago, if it's tax-related. Probably more of an assessor thing, like how does the assessor, you know, review those analytics, put some information around it to. To build a case to say, hey, your car's been here, you know, there's, there's taxes owed, you need to, you know, update your registration kind of thing.
We also have to make sure that one system can share to the others, that the police system can share to the civilian system, right? Um Waterberry does have a program.
Of my question originally.
Right, yeah. Waterberry has a program.
Right.
And it does exactly what the chief described. Uh they scan plates. And if you're picked up in the same location X amount of times and you're unregistered, you're gonna get a ticket. Now, is it possible that it picks up people that visit friends regularly? Yes, it happens all the time. But they basically give the tickets and let everything get sorted out after the fact. That's something we can definitely explore doing, whether we could use the police scanner on the police car to do it. All depends on whether we could share that data with the civilians in the assessor's office. The way around that, of course, is to get our own scanner and put it on to, say, a blight car or, hey, a public works car. That goes around the city every day and that's completely possible. What I'll do is I'll pull the protocol from Waterberry and we'll see whether or not, you know. You know, what the scope of those obstacles are to creating a system like that. And I'll talk further to the chief about whether or not we could share the data. Because when we looked into this before, the problem was sharing data from the existing scanner on a cop car. With the tax officer, the assessor's office and allowing them to look at those um those data points that Tony is uh is correct about mentioning. So I I think it's about getting a plan and then figuring out how we actually enforce it. You know, what reader are we gonna use, can we use?
Since John, remember when I, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, what I was gonna say, I I think you are correct, John, and I'd be interested to see what Waterberry said because I know we can access civilian scanners. So we use, we do it all the time. We'll do search warrants on on companies that have scanners in town, like tow trucks that drive through town, et cetera. But I'm not sure I can do with the flip side of that, where civilian, we can use police, this police scanning data for civilians.
Right, exactly.
We spoke to Waterberry right before we were writing up that policy about. The tagging the cars and sending the letters. Waterberry did say they had it on. Public Works vehicles and I know we had a conversation about putting it on Public Works. This way we own the data. And we didn't have to inter- interface with the police department because it was, it's one matter for them, but what we were trying to do is. Our own fines separate from the state fees.
Yeah, we may want to price out what that scanner would cost and I think that would be important as part of our overall budget. Um but it's definitely worthwhile effort. Um the the surveillance of the place helps. It's pretty much the only way. That you can keep an eye on what's going on with this situation. And we didn't mention this before and it'll only have a brief mention of this now, but the city is actively exploring a plan. Including costs and implementation for a surveillance program and devices for the police department. So this is basically to assist our police department in keeping an eye on the streets. In particular, starting with those problem intersections and areas where we know crime can flourish if not watched. Um and we are looking at number one, the the fiber network that will be necessary as a foundation for these cameras and the cameras themselves. And we have fast-tracked this. Uh we've been talking with vendors and consultants and we hope to have more specific, more specific information. About how we may implement such a program in the coming budget year. Um and so that's for a later meeting, but I did want to mention that that's a big project and an important project that we're all involved on.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the chief?
Good job, chief.
Alright, yeah, thank you for all your work.
Thank you. I just don't understand how Mr. Miller keeps getting off with no questions.
Uh it's quite nice, quite nice.
Uh next up, uh School Superintendent Dr. Joseph DeBaco.
Right, uh thank you, everybody, and um I just want to let the uh Board of Aldermen know that tomorrow is the last day of school. Um high school graduation is Saturday, the eighteenth at nine o'clock at Nolan Field. Uh I do want to thank um Mayor Cassetti and Alderman Schewer for uh speaking today. At our middle school promotion ceremony. It was much appreciated, uh both gentlemen. Uh I also want to thank um Mr. Bishara on the Board of Ed and Mayor Cassetti and the Board of Aldermen for their support. In our effort to increase security in our schools. Very important. I I have to thank Wayne Williams. Um I have to thank my board. Um I I don't want to say anything about a tragedy, but on April twenty-seventh. Our board approved for us to increase our security in our schools before um unfortunate events happen. In in our country. So I want to thank our board for being proactive. I want to thank, thank the mayor for being very supportive and Wayne as well. Um for being a great partner. Um I I also want to thank Mayor Cassetti uh for the formation of the school uh construction committee. I I look forward to that time. And I I look forward to the time that we can have uh a a new middle school. I I do want to share that our summer programs will be starting. Um I also want to share that there's three pretty. I think pretty cool and innovative summer programs. We have been selected by by Gateway and Quinnipiac for uh STEM camps for our students. Uh just most recently, I got a call from Quinnipiac, eighteen students for a two-week overnight STEM camp, grades nine through twelve. Uh normally costs about thirty-three hundred dollars, but it's free for our kids, so that um relationship with Quinnipiac is great. We have three students that got accepted to this Sikorsky uh uh summer internship program, which I'm I'm very proud of. Seeing um our young men and our young ladies take advantage of that pathway. And lastly, I I did want to congratulate some of our staff. We had a teacher at Prendergast Elementary School who uh received a presidential award for um in the area of of, in a recognition for, in mathematics. The high school was recognized with a Milken Award winner and this year our teacher of the year was from Ansonia Middle School. So we really s- spread the wealth this year with uh exceptional staff all around. I think it was a a really long year, but once again, I I think our teachers and our staff are. We're, we're ending the year, An- Ansonia's strong the way we do here in Ansonia. I I'm very proud of that. And um I'm willing to take any questions, anything that anyone has to share or ask.
Thank you. Any questions from the Alderman or Dr. DeBaco?
Just uh wanted to share our gratitude to you, Joe, for being such a great leader for uh education and. Leading our, our children, our precious assets in the right direction through a very hard year. You did a great job and thank you.
It it's an absolute honor to serve the people here in Ansonia. It's absolutely an honor. It's my pleasure.
Absolutely.
Cheers to you and your staff, Joe. Nice job.
Thank you.
I want to thank, I want to thank you for hanging around, hanging around. I know you, you don't have to come to these meetings, but you do, and you were in the queue for about thirteen minutes. All ready to roll and then we just kept hammering uh Wayne Williams with questions and I saw you waiting and waiting and waiting, but thank you for coming. We we do appreciate it.
You got it. Take care. Have a great night, everyone.
Yeah, bye, and you too.
Night, Joe.
Alright, that ends the uh public official session. We'll move on to uh committee reports, finance committee. Somebody?
Make a motion to pay all bills if deemed correct.
Motion to, motion to pay all bills by Mamon, second by.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed or abstaining? Alright, motion carries. Um let's see, how about uh any other committees um to report on from the Alderman? Alright, um we have just a general motion to accept all the reports that were in the packet um that are not on the agenda.
All moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion by uh Cassetti, second by Rivers, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed or abstaining? Alright, motion carries. And we'll move on to municipal reports, the vote recommendations. That are in their packet as well.
Yeah.
Motion to accept.
Make a motion to accept the recommendations by vote.
Second.
Motion by Cassetti, second by Mamon, all in favor?
Uh hi.
Any opposed? The abstentions. Motion carries unanimously. Uh next up, we have the um multiple uh things from the tax collector with the tax collector report and a request for refunds. And then there were two additional um things that we already, we already accepted the um, the two lists that were in there, but. Um the the regular tax collector report.
So moved.
Uh motion by Cassetti.
Second.
Second by Rivers, all in favor?
Uh hi.
Hi.
Substances, okay, unanimous again, and the request for refunds. Do I have the amount here somewhere?
One thousand five hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents.
Boom.
That's done.
Alright, so motion by Yaman.
I'll make the motion, yeah.
Motion by Yaman, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Carr, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Alright, motion carries. Like I said, the tax collector report and this is the. Uh the suspense and write-off lists are in there. Are there any questions on that? I mean, I didn't want to. Let uh go over those, but those are not normally on on the agenda, but those were included by the tax collector.
Only question I have, Josh, is do any, um specific motions to uh to to do the write-off and the suspension on those lists? Or are we just good accepting them?
Um I'm assuming we just, we're accepting that by accepting them, you know, if she needs any approval, I I I um.
Rich, I, Rich Bishara's got his hand.
Oh, I had the tax collector, I talked to her today. I didn't get the impression that we needed anything. Oh, I had the tax collector, I talked to her today. I didn't get the impression that we needed anything official, but Rich, go ahead.
Yes, uh, if you could vote on this, the, the, the auditors will look for the board approving the, uh, suspense list specifically and. And the write-offs as part of the accounting that he'll do for it. So if you could vote on that, that would be appreciated.
Perfect, thanks. All right, so first up is, um. A tax collector suspense list.
So moved.
Motion Rivers and second by Tar, all in favor.
Do we, one, just discussion point real quick. Do we want to include the amount of forty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, you have the amount in front of you there, Joe?
Yeah, I just read it. It was the, uh.
Forty-nine thousand.
Nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars even.
Okay, perfect. And we have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, abstaining. All right, motion carries unanimously. And then the second one is, is, uh, B.
Yep.
Tax collector write-off list.
Yep, motion to approve the write-off list and the amount of five hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Second.
Right, motion by Yaman, second by Adamowski. Uh, any discussion on this one? All right, and I did have a detailed conversation with the tax collector as to what these, um, what these entailed and. Um, if you, if you want me to share that with you, let me know. Um, okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Right. Opposed, abstentions. All right, motion carries unanimously again. All right, uh, next up accidents and claims. We had, um, four claims. Um, zero, five, two, two, uh, one, oh, three, one, one, oh, three, two, one, oh, three, three, and one, oh, three, four.
Motion to refer to corporate counsel.
Motion to refer by Tar. And a second, who's talking during that?
I was, buddy.
You can do it in Chicago, doesn't matter.
And then second by Rivers. Uh, all favor to pass these to corporation counsel?
Hi. Hi.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right. Moving on. We got one late communication, which we added at the beginning of the agenda. This was from Planning and Zoning Committee. It was for pretty much identical, uh, letters regarding the eight twenty fours that we requested last month. Um, for the following, uh, properties, two Elm Street. Six Lester Street, thirty-five North Main Street and Fifty-Eight High Street. And all came back with a positive, um, referral, a positive eight twenty-four.
Uh, at this point, do we need to refer that to city staff?
Yeah, I think we send that to them, um, because that was, that was empowering them to, to, you know, giving them a positive, uh, referral.
Right.
Motion to, motion to refer to city staff by Yaman. Do we have a second?
A second.
Who was that?
Tar.
Tar, second by Tar, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? Any, um. The abstentions? All right. Unanimous again. Uh, we had no resignations. Uh, oh, we have one resolution. All right, so the mayor, um, mentioned this at the outset of the meeting. And, uh, if you recall, we had, um. Uh, Silverberg, um, donating the, uh, championship belt recently. And, uh, I thought that was a, a real good feel-good story. Um, honoring our past and, and, uh, local heroes and it kind of spurred the conversation. And now we had, you know, we had a, a pretty spirited conversation about, you know, how, how could we? Sort of make this something that we, we do more regularly. And so the mayor mentioned having this. Keys to the City Initiative where we would designate, um, up to three, uh, people. Um, individuals, organizations, uh, or businesses and, uh. This is the Board of Aldermen, uh, while the subcommittee, uh, that I'll announce that will administer this program. Uh, it would be up to three, three members, but we wanted to kind of come out the gate strong the first month. And have one in each of the three categories. So, uh, there, you see them listed in your packet and I wanted to, uh, briefly go over those. Um. And, uh. Well, obviously because of, uh, COVID, we will not be, um. Well, because of the digital meeting, we won't be handing you a, a key in person. But we, um. They will be delivered to you and I can assure you that they open every single door in City Hall. Even the, even the back doors and the safes and all that, um, they're like, it's basically a master key to the city. Um, so these are very valuable. They're, they're very valuable on the, on the black market as well. They actually don't open anything. They're decorative, they're nice, but they are a symbol of our appreciation. So our first, uh, nominee is our town clerk, Beth Shortell Lynch. She sees on here, hi Beth. Um, congratulations. And I just want to give a, a brief bio. Um, Beth has worked in, uh, for twenty-eight years in municipal, uh, government. Including eleven, uh, years in the town clerk's offices in Milford, Ansonia, Orange and Woodbridge. Um, she recently became a certified Connecticut town clerk. Uh, she recently celebrated her fiftieth, uh, wedding anniversary. Uh, and personally, I can't ever attend a football, baseball or basketball game in Ansonia without seeing her. Or her family, uh, cheering there as well. Um, she's a lifelong resident. Uh, and actually, uh, as an aside, has some very interesting Alderman-related, um, family history. Uh, including, uh, her father, uh, Pop Shortill, who was the youngest. Uh, Alderman elected in Ansonia at the age of twenty-one. Uh, her late brother was elected as an Alderman in the nineteen eighties and her great grandfather. Was a member of the very first Board of Aldermen elected in eighteen eighty-nine. So, uh, a lifer in Ansonia. So congratulations again.
Thank you.
And, uh, just for the record. Uh, try to see if I can find the, uh, actually I can't share here. I was gonna show you what the key looked like, but. Um. Let's see if I can do that. There it is. You see it?
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, we see it.
Yeah. Like I said, opens nothing, but. So, uh, on that note, eighteen eighty-nine, uh, her great grandfather became a member of the first Board of Aldermen. Our second nominee, uh, eighteen eighty-nine was also an important year. The Macedonia Baptist Church was formed in eighteen eighty-nine. Um, hundred and thirty-three years in existence. Um. Obviously an iconic, uh, landmark, uh, in the city. They always have a, a major, uh, presence at the Harvest Festival. Very, uh, involved in food drives, food drop-offs. Um, they host a, a fundraising dinners. Uh, they were very, very active at the height of COVID. Uh, and Reverend Al Smith of the senior pastor has been a great leader for that church, uh, and our community. Uh, including playing a pivotal role along with others, uh, on the MLK Bus Committee. Uh, so congratulations to them. I don't know that they have any representation here tonight. But, uh, congrats on our organization. Uh, and the third, um, was not formed in eighteen eighty-nine, but, uh, moved to Ansonia in twenty fifteen, uh, road-ready. Use cars, uh, newer entry, but they've quickly become a staple in city events ever since arriving to town. Um, they, they're pretty much involved in anything that the city, uh, has done. Toys for Tots, Toys for Kids. Uh, charity car wash for the Boys and Girls Club. Uh, they also are, uh, very prominent at the Harvest Festival. They're constantly donating, uh, trucks for, uh, parades. Uh, they make donations, uh, for the city movie nights. Um, they were a key financier for the summer fireworks. And bottom line is the, uh, owner, Ron Saracino and his family have always been there for, for Ansonia. So congratulations to them as well. Uh, I'll be in touch with, um. With the, the, uh, the subcommittee that will, uh, work on this, uh, in the future. We will necessarily have three. Uh, every month, but we wanted to kind of come out and, and sort of show the spirit of, of the program and. And start to, uh, acknowledge some of the great and happy things, um, that are happening in, in Ansonia. So. Um. So there is a, a resolution. In your packet, resolution, the keys to the city initiative. Uh, introduced by all members of the Board of Aldermen. Uh, the Ansonia Board of Aldermen hereby adopts the following resolution. Whereas the city of Ansonia is experiencing tremendous resurgence in economic and community activity. And whereas certain individuals and organizations have been publicly unrecognized for their critical role in supporting the commercial, social. And cultural revitalization of our city. And whereas the Ansonia Board of Aldermen on behalf of the city and its mayor, David S. Cassetti. Look to recognize the contributions of such individuals and organizations. Therefore, be it resolved that the Ansonia Board of Aldermen hereby establishes the Keys to the City Initiative. By which each month, a group of up to three Ansonia residents, organizations and/or businesses may be approved. By the Ansonia Board of Aldermen as recipients. Of the Keys to the City Award in recognition of their contributions to the city of Ansonia. And a Keys to the City Subcommittee of the Board of Aldermen shall be appointed by the president for the purposes. Purpose of making monthly recommendations for approval each month by the full Board of Aldermen. And then it includes the list of, of this month's, um. Wordies. We have a motion to approve this.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Adamowski. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you guys. Um, next up, we have appointments. Lost my notes here and then we have one appointment this one.
Yep.
And, uh, it's gonna find the committee. One appointment to the Connecticut Regional Water District, um. This is, uh, to reappoint Thomas P. Clifford, the third Democrat of ten Southwestwood Road. Term to expire six thirty, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by. Who was it? Adamowski?
Yes.
Adamowski is second by Tar, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. Congrats and thank you. Uh, we have no ordinances, uh, presented, uh, under new business. We have one item, um, you receive this. Uh, this week, this is the facade loan, uh, application for Fresnel LLC, two thirty-two Main Street.
Yes, um, make a motion to, to, uh, to refer this to the. Uh, subcommittee that handles this.
Yep, all right.
Second. Second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Cassetti to refer to these facade subcommittee. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed or abstaining? Carries. Um, any other new business? Not on the agenda, any old business? All right, so, uh, at this point, we have, uh, under executive session, we have one item. Uh, potential sale of city property, Olson Drive. We have a motion to move to executive session.
Motion to move to executive session.
Second.
Motion by Cassetti, second by Rivers, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
All right. And we would want all the Aldermen.
Motion to come out of executive session.
Motion to come out of executive session, first, second by. What is that?
Second.
Uh, by Tar, second by Tar, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, uh, so in executive session, we had one item. Potential sale of city property, Olson Drive. What's your pleasure?
I have three motions, Mr. President. Uh, first motion is, uh, motion to direct corporation counsel to proceed as discussed in executive session.
All right, uh, motion to proceed as directed in executive session, all favor?
Second, second, second.
Second, sorry, second is Rivers, motion by, by Rivers, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed?
Second motion is to, uh, schedule a public hearing for the sale of Olson Drive on June twenty-eighth at six P M.
Second.
Okay.
Motion by Yaman, second by Tar to, uh, schedule a public hearing. On the sale of Olson Drive at Tuesday, June twenty-eighth at six P M. All in favor?
Ah.
Hi. Oh. Abstentions.
Seconded it.
Uh, Tar.
Thank you.
And third, uh, would be the motion to schedule a public hearing on a tax incentive document for Olson Drive on Tuesday, June twenty-eighth at six P M.
Second.
Motion by Yaman, second by Cassetti. Um, for the tax incentive hearing. Same date, same time?
Same date, same time.
Yep, all right, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, guys.
And Chicago.
Hit it, Rivers.
Motion. Motion, so is this meeting.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Ramon, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, bye. Good one.